Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, city staff, invited guests and visitors. Welcome to our city council meeting. Also want to welcome my colleagues at this time, and I would ask that if we could all stand for a moment of silence, and as we stand, I would ask, I had a conversation with my brother, Mayor Brandon Scott of Baltimore, Maryland, and sent condolences from the city of Portsmouth due to the bridge collapse that they had early this morning. So I would ask during the moment of silence that you keep the city of Baltimore and all of its citizens in your thoughts and prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now I ask all my colleagues to please note your presence electronically.
Six members of city council are present.
We now need approval for our minutes. We have a called meeting on February 27, 2024, and a call meeting on March 4, 2024. Also, a regular meeting on February 27, 2024. Special meetings, March 18 and, was it 24th, ma'am? March 18 and, I can't read that.
It's March 4, 18, 2024.
Okay. March and special meetings on our March 18, 2024. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have now moved to the item on our agenda, public hearings, and our first item is item 24-76, item A, U.P.-23-19, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution we're considering at this time?
Yes, sir. U.P. 2319, West Haven, resolution granting the request of Joseph Pulli with Arnhold Marketing Services for a use permit to construct three-unit townhouse development on approximately .22 acre parcel at 4423 King Street in urban residential zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property for low-to-medium-density, single-family residential uses. The property is owned by Arnhold Marketing Services. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads "A resolution granting a use permit, U.P. 2319, to Arnhold Marketing Services to construct a townhouse development having no more than three units at 4423 King Street."
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mm-hmm.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Joe Pulli, 3780 Shore Drive in Virginia Beach, Virginia. As I started out, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, other members of council. My name is Joe Pulli. I'm here on behalf of the owner, Arnhold Marketing Services. I appreciate the opportunity to briefly present our application. Our request is for a use permit that will allow the construction of three new townhouse units on three existing lots at 4423 King Street. The existing home has fallen into disrepair and would be demolished in preparation of the construction of the new townhouse units. We have worked closely with the planning commission, planning staff, to develop the application for the three rear-loading townhouse units, and have received a recommendation of approval from the planning staff and a recommendation unanimously from the planning commission for approval. The proposed use is consistent with the recommendation of the city's Bill 1 Portsmouth Plan, and the use permit request also supports a city's strategic housing plan, which recommends updating city's housing stock with modern housing. In closing, I would add that the owner is aware of the conditions imposed on this use permit, and we are agreed to abide by them all. I respectfully request that the city council grant approval for the use permit. Thank you, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and other members of the council. I appreciate your consideration of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Pulli. Are there any questions for Mr. Pulli from my colleagues on council? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for being here tonight, Mr. Pulli. Just a comment, not a question. I appreciate that you took a relook at the design-
Yes, sir.
-for your site plan after visiting planning commission the first time and at the request of the local civic league, and so I appreciate that you made the adjustments that the local neighbors asked for you to look into and that this plan reflects those changes. So thanks for being considerate of those neighbors' concerns.
Absolutely, sir.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues on council? Seeing none, Mr. Pulli, thank you, sir, for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, and you are not required to have signed up in order to come and speak on this public hearing item. If you wish to come forward and speak on this particular public hearing item, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 6-0.
And Madam Clerk, before I go forward, did I ask you to read the speaker's statement, ma'am?
You did not.
I did not. And if you would please, if we would just digress for a moment as you read the speaker's statement.
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light and hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, continuing on our public hearing item, item B, U.P.-23-23, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item resolution that we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. Downtown, resolution granting the request of Tawana Frater with Gentle Touch Learning Center, LLC, for a use permit to operate a child daycare center on approximately .49 acre parcel located at 309 Columbia Street in the downtown D1-T5 zoning sub-district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use downtown. The property is owned by Pine Craft Press, Inc. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads "A resolution granting a use permit, U.P. 2323, to Gentle Touch Learning Center, LLC, to operate a child daycare center in an existing building at 309 Columbia Street."
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
It's good to see you today, ma'am. If you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Tawana Frater. I am currently at 3621 Turnpike Road, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23707. I'm the director and owner of Gentle Touch Learning Center. I have been teaching in Portsmouth Public School for the past 14 years and have been operating a childcare center for the past eight years in Portsmouth. We are currently proposing a place for childcare center at 309 Columbia Street. Gentle Touch Learning Center is proposing to have a learning center that operates from Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. The center will admit children from the ages of 12 weeks old up to 12 years old. We propose having a total of 120 children with a team of 16 to 20 teachers rotating shifts between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Gentle Touch Learning Center will be using 12,000 square feet of the building space and a 40 by 43, 1,720 square feet for outside area for a playground in the parking lot. Currently, our center on Turnpike Road is a part of the Virginia Equality, Birth Through Five program, which implements by Eastern Virginia Medical School, and we are also a part of the cohorts of the childcare centers that are implementing the curriculum Stream N3, which is offered by the Centers for Advanced Studies for Teaching and Learning at the University of Virginia as a curriculum option offered through a partnership with Virginia Department of Education. As an early childhood care and education provider, we would like the opportunity to implement the same program in the South Side area downtown Portsmouth. Studies have shown that children who are receiving and approve preschool curriculum education are more likely to form better habits of going to school regularly and are ready for the kindergarten curriculum. Currently, our school system struggles with chronic absentees, and having a program that is close to home that gives parents the convenience of dropping off their child at our center before going to work would be helpful. Our students who are in the public school system receive assistance with homework and daily, along with tutoring. We also have a summer program, which is a reading readiness program for our school-age students to prepare them for the next grade level. Living in Portsmouth for almost 20 years, I am aware of the flooding that takes place in the downtown area. The building is located at the corner of Columbia Street and Court Street. Therefore, when Court Street is flooded, the parents would be able to use the Crawford Street entrance to drive into Columbia to pick up their children. The center will implement a flood plan management plan along with emergency plan. Gentle Touch Learning Center will follow the guidelines set by the city for operating a childcare center. In the floor plan of the building, we are proposing to open up three walls, install three toilets, three hand sinks for the restroom areas, and two hand sinks in classrooms. We are in contact with the fire department, environmental health services, and the engineering department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frater. Are there any questions from my colleagues on council for Ms. Frater? Seeing none, Ms. Frater, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, and you are not required to have signed up in order to come speak on this public hearing item. If you do choose to come and speak on this item, you will need to state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, I would ask you all to please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item C, AP-24-01, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item for this resolution that we're considering at this time?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting the request of the city to adopt a plan for the Innovation District. The new document will be titled "City of Portsmouth Innovation District Plan." The plan will recommend strategies and tactics for achieving the identified goals and recommendations for funding and tools for implementing the strategies and tactics. The planning committee, Planning Commission recommends approval, and the actual resolution reads "A resolution adopting the City of Portsmouth Innovation District Plan."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Mr. Swetts, sir, please begin your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Swetts. I am in the planning department. I have been the project manager for the Portsmouth Innovation Overlay District Plan for the past two years, and I'm very happy and excited to be with you tonight to present the final draft of the plan. Before I begin, I just want to give a couple of thank yous to people in the audience. First, I would like to thank Brian Donahue, our Economic Development Director. It's sometimes rare when planning departments and economic development departments play well together, and it's been an absolute pleasure working with him and his staff on this project. We've been very much in line with what we've been trying to accomplish, and I think that speaks very highly of him, and it speaks a lot to what we've been able to accomplish in the plan. I'd also like to thank Jason Epley with Benchmark Consulting, who is the project manager. One of the reasons that we hired him was from recommendations from other past work and from planners that I know and respect, and they were not wrong. He's been a pleasure to work with. He's produced very, very good work. I hope that you all will be proud of the document that we've worked together to provide to you today. So for our agenda tonight, I want to remind you quickly about what this Innovation District is, highlight the goals for the plan, and then to go through the 10 recommendations that are going to be found inside the plan. As a quick reminder, this is an outline of the area that's known currently as the Innovation District. It's highlighted in blue. This is a picture of High Street going through the heart of the Innovation District, and you can see the under-investment that has been plaguing this area for decades now. But at the same time, this has provided us with an opportunity, and we think that we have a good chance to capitalize, in part by implementing what we're going to recommend in this plan. We have done an incredible amount of public outreach, as you can see in this graphic here, but I would point out that the public outreach is not done. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, thank you for bringing Club Deportes to our attention. We met with them last week. They were actually very excited, and ironically enough, they had said a couple of projects that they were looking to do with their club were things that we were going to be recommending in the plan. So we were all already kind of on the same page, but it was good to get a chance to meet with them and to talk about where we'll be going in the future. As I mentioned, we have challenges here, but these challenges are a chance for us to take advantage of the benefits that we've got. The city and the Economic Development Authority control a lot of land in this district, and so that gives us an opportunity to almost start fresh in a way that we don't often have a chance to do here in Portsmouth because so much of our land is already developed or is controlled by some sort of outside entity. We have four main goals in this plan. The first one is to grow our own jobs. We want to be investing in our people, in our community. One way to do that is by creating an entrepreneurial atmosphere and providing the infrastructure that's needed for businesses to grow and to succeed. So for example, we have the city's fiber ring that's already in existence in the neighborhood. You can see the outlines there in red where the cable has already been laid. This is an opportunity for new and innovative businesses to come in and take advantage of super-high-speed internet access. We want to be able to provide a place for new businesses and existing businesses who may want to relocate here, to have space to sell their wares or to sell their services to members of the community. Starting a business is hard. There's a lot of different facets that go into it, and so we want to provide mentorship opportunities for people who are new to starting a business or maybe have started a business but it hasn't grown like they're hoping to. So we hope that we can provide skills, we can provide access to both people and to other entities that can help you, whether it's marketing or it's accounting, it's help with city permitting processes, whatever that may be, giving us the opportunity to reach out directly to people so we can help them pursue their own dreams. I've said "local" a couple of times, and I've done that very specifically because, again, we are not trying to attract regional businesses. We're not necessarily looking for attracting national businesses. We are looking at trying to invest in our own residents and Portsmouth people. For example, I.C. Norcom, it's right here in the heart of the district. This would be an opportunity for us to invest in our students who are graduating, who are looking for something maybe other than college or maybe something other than traditional, you know, apprenticeship going to the shipyard, but who have an idea for a business and they're not really sure how to get started. This would be a chance for us to be able to reach these students and give them something else to look forward to in the future. Our second goal is creating the Greenest Street in Hampton Roads. This is a mock-up of what the new High Street corridor might look like. We are awaiting the RACE grant that we've won from the federal government. I'm hopeful that that will be measured in weeks now as opposed to months. We still have to go out to the community to get their input on design, but we have been talking about this while we've been doing our public outreach, and there has been a lot of support for the ideas that you can kind of see in the picture, like making the street safer by having bumpouts at the corners that are closer together so you don't have to walk as far to get across the street, by bringing tree plantings in to improve the aesthetics, to improve air quality, having a shared use path that's off of the street to provide cyclists and pedestrians a place to ride more safely. While this is a new streetscape and there's a lot that goes into it, it's important to remember the goal here is to make a street that is accessible to all and not just a street that's made for cars. As part of that, we would like to incorporate green infrastructure through things like tree plantings. These trees can do a number of things to benefit the community. They can help to absorb storm water and mitigate flooding. They improve air quality. They improve property values. They lower temperatures. And we can build, we can plant them and nurture them in a way that they will not buckle sidewalks. They won't be intruding into buildings that are along those sidewalks, so we can hope to assuage some of the fears that people have by planting trees by doing that in the correct way. And finally, we heard from the community specifically that they wanted to see sustainability, and they want to see resiliency incorporated into this plan, so looking at things like electric charging stations, whether that could be for scooters or for cars, use of solar power and other renewable energy sources to power buildings and such. All of these are new ideas that we need to be thinking about here in Portsmouth, and this is a great opportunity to showcase and to find out what works for us. Our third goal is to create a great place. As I showed you in the picture of High Street, there's not a whole lot out there when you're driving down the road, but that what is there does provide us, no pun intended, a canvas to work from. So doing things like creating a public art program where you could see murals or you could see statues and other such features that beautify the community and hopefully express the hopes and the visions and the history of the people who already live there. And finally, we're trying to build a more equitable community. This was a district that was redlined back in the '30s, and you still see the vestiges of that today through things like the lack of tree canopy coverage. And so we want to be able to try to bring you ideas for how we can make it more equitable, whether it's through things like tree planting, or I'll talk about a little bit later, bringing more healthcare into the district. But equity extends beyond just those things that we think about that I've just mentioned, but also into things like safety. This is a very dangerous road, which is kind of strange when you consider that it's straight. There's not a whole lot of cross traffic. There's not a whole lot of traffic at all, to be honest. But when you look at that section of High Street compared to any other street in the immediate vicinity, including 264, you see a lot more serious crashes and definitely more fatalities. And so that's not good for the people who live there. It's not good for the businesses that exist there, and so we believe that this plan gives us an opportunity to try to fix the problem that exists out there with road design. All right, I would like to get into the 10 recommendations that we are going to be highlighting in the plan, and first I want to look at the three subareas that we have that we are looking to create in the district. And moving from right to left on the map here, we're going to start with this Maker Square, which goes from about Chestnut Street to about Elm Street. You can see in yellow, those are residential units that have already been approved. We have townhouses on the south side of High Street and then affordable housing on the corner of High and Elm. The buildings in white on the north side of High Street, those buildings already exist. The city and the EDA control some of those. There's also green spaces in between the buildings that we can use for things like event space or outdoor flea markets or markets. We would like to bring into this area ground floor retail. We would like to bring in a maker space, a place where people can come into what essentially looks like a light industrial warehouse, rent space, have access to tools, have access to mentorship and training classes, so that they have an idea for a business, have an idea to create something or build something, and then here they have a low-capital option to be able to do that, so they don't have to go out and buy expensive machinery and expensive tools. They can come and utilize what's already there as they work through trying to figure out what kind of, what is my product going to look like, how am I going to create it in a cost-effective manner, and then providing space to sell those products so that they can see how the market feels about them. Moving to the west, in the center of the district, we have our Health and Wellness Square. The idea here is we have the existing city health services with social services, the health department, behavioral health. We have the new Hampton Roads Community Health Center, who we've heard from a lot when we've done our public outreach, and they've said, "Look, we need more health services." We have a lot of customers who are coming through who don't have access either in the district or in the city to certain things, and it would be benefit to all of us if we could bring those closer to here. So then, people who are going to the community health center, they have the opportunity to have kind of a one-stop shop where they're in the district, they can go and have other health appointments at the same time. We'd like to bring some more mixed use into the district here. We think that's compatible with healthcare because healthcare does not create a lot of noise or other such negative externalities that might bother people who would be looking to live in the district. And then finally, as we move farther to the west, we get to the Martin Luther King Connector, and we have an existing light industrial and industrial space where we don't really want to touch what's there. Instead, we think that things like the Quonset Huts that you see here are actually a good low-cost opportunity for people who started business, say, in the maker space and now have grown out of it, and they need somewhere where they can engage in some smaller manufacturing. This would be a great place for them to be able to locate. We're hopeful that by providing these types of areas, we are, by investing and then providing space, we are instilling a sense of pride in the neighborhood, a sense of pride in the city, and people aren't going to want to leave. They're going to want to stay here and then use what they have learned to help mentor the next generation of people who are coming up. Okay, so getting into the specific recommendations, I mentioned the high street scape before, and again, you can kind of see the ideas here that we're trying to make the street safer with a lot of the different infrastructure improvements. Bring tree planting to the district along the street, partly to improve property values, partly to mitigate flooding, but also to lower the temperatures that are out there. This graph kind of shows how urban areas, because they have more asphalt and less green space, they tend to absorb heat, whereas when you start moving out to the country, it gets cooler. So by planting the trees and by providing plazas and green spaces in the district, we hope that we can lower the temperature, lower cooling costs for people as it gets hotter in the summers. I found this picture and love this because it really highlighted three planning recommendations in one. Looking at creating new gateway features so that people know when they're coming into the district that they're coming somewhere new, expanding our public art program, and then creation of a SEPTED program, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Just in this one feature here where you have these solar lights, they're interesting to look at. They're tall, they attract attention. You put something like this, you know, say, at the corner of High and Elm, it's something that makes people stop and look and say, "Hey, what's going on here?" But it also is interesting to look at. It's something, you know, that was built by a local artist in this community, so you're providing jobs for people who are there. It provides a gathering space for people to come together, and by providing additional lighting, you increase visibility. You have more eyes on the street, you're making the community safer. All of these benefits from just one sculpture like this. I thought that was a really cool thing and wanted to highlight that specifically. In the near future, we are going to be bringing you recommendations for updating the zoning ordinance as it relates to the Innovation Overlay District. One of the things that we're going to be looking at doing is recommending that we have mixed use by right in the district. And again, I want to highlight that I'm saying mixed use and not multifamily. We don't want to give all this land away to developers, and I do- We don't want to give all this land away to developers, and I do believe that if this, if you had multifamily by right out here, that land would be snatched up pretty quick because we do need a lot more housing in Portsmouth. But if we can make mixed use by right, and we can use that to hopefully try to attract things like our healthcare uses and residential uses at the same time. I mentioned sustainability and resiliency being important to the people who came out and spoke to us in the public. I will say this, as someone who is on the city's Resiliency Committee, it was not my original intention to make this a focal point of the plan, this was something that we heard directly from people, and that's why this is being included. I mentioned things like tree planting before, I mentioned things like looking for renewable energy sources. These are all things that we know that they exist and they're being built in other cities, but we haven't done a whole lot of that here, and so this is an opportunity for us to jump on that bandwagon and improve life for everyone who is living out there. And that's part of the equity piece and inclusion piece as well. We are lucky that there are not a whole lot of people who live out there, I say that because that means that we're not as concerned about things like gentrification and displacement as you might find in other redevelopment plans that you've seen throughout your careers. We also know that the people who do live there are suffering from a lack of services, especially when it comes to healthcare, and so we think that this is an opportunity to provide those services, not just to people who live there, but also other people in Portsmouth who don't necessarily want to go to another city to have their healthcare needs met. I believe Councilman Whitaker, you asked me during the last presentation if this was going to be a one- or two-year plan, I said, "No, this is a very long-term plan," and I still believe that that's true. We do need to have leadership in order for this to be successful, this is something we need to pay attention to for a number of years going forward. We need people who are coming to city council to say, "Hey, this is important to us," we need people showing up to meetings to be involved with the plans that we want to implement out there, we need city staff to say, "This is important, we want to include this in our budget." All of this is going to be necessary if we want to see what we are envisioning in the plan help happen in the future, and when I say "future," I mean 10, 20, 30 years down the road. And finally, this area, because it's so vacant, it needs an identity, and so we need to figure out what that is, and that's going to come about by talking to people from the community, not by going out and telling them what their neighborhood is. When we can establish that identity, then we can create a brand, then we can start going out and selling the community through marketing strategies. But I believe that this is something that's incredibly exciting, and I think that this is something that people are going to want to be involved in, and I think there's going to be a lot of good ideas on how to do that. For those who are interested, you can find a draft of the plan on the city's website. I'm happy to take any of your questions, but in the meantime, I hope that you all agree with me that this is an exciting opportunity for Portsmouth, and we encourage you to adopt this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swetz, and we do have one of my colleagues, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Swetz, at your last presentation, if I remember correctly, is it something like $18 million that is available for redevelopment in this area Innovation District?
We won a $19.3 million RACE grant, and shout to Senator Lucas who found $4.8 billion, $4.8 billion, that would be fantastic, $4.8 million in the state budget to cover the city's match for the High Street streetscape. So yeah, we're looking at $24 million or so in investment coming into the district, on top of the investment that we're already seeing in the residential development that I pointed out to you, plus the calls that I'm getting unsolicited and that economic development is getting unsolicited, saying, "Hey, we saw this in the pilot, we're really excited, we want to come out here."
Yeah, well, the question, the reason I asked that question, the 24 million that you're speaking of now, how is that to be distributed?
So we have to go through an RFP process for the design and the construction of the streetscape, so that will go through the traditional city procurement process.
Right, so the 24 million, how is that going to be broken out? I know it's not all just for the street, but what will be the other areas that that will be used for?
It's all going to be used for the design and the construction of the street.
Okay, so...
We're looking at about a mile-long segment from Chestnut Street about to the MLK.
So when you say the design and construction, are you talking about those peripheral buildings as well, or just the street?
No.
So when you say just the street, you're talking paving and sidewalk and shrubbery?
Tree planting, lighting, infrastructure, utilities, all of those kinds of things, yes.
Right, and so RFPs are going to go out to do that work?
Yes.
Okay, so my issue with the plan is that it's going to involve contracting. There's nothing I've seen in this plan, and I've spoken to Donahue, I've mentioned it to Mr. Donahue before under the previous administration, that you all come before us with these designs and flowery pictures and images, they look good. I'm concerned, when you talk about equity, I think equity is when we involve everyone in that contracting process, and we already know that there is a disparity that exists in this city when it comes to contracting with minority contractors, we've already seen the data. So my problem with this is that there's nothing in here that shows any type of minority participation of this $24 million. So when I look at equity and inclusion, that's what $24 million ought to be addressing. And, you know, when you all come up here with these presentations, and we keep glossing over this minority participation in a city that is a minority, a majority African-American city with a high poverty rate, where we know we need minority businesses involved, we can't just come presenting $24 million with pictures and we don't have a plan for how we're going to empower these groups that have been disenfranchised. When you see this amount of money coming into the community and we don't have a plan for that, then that tells me we're not serious about it. And so I will not be in favor of any plan where we're seeing this amount of money that's coming into the city and we don't see any intentional act on the city of correcting the disparities that we have in contracting, because all of that work, like you said, is going to be done, is going to be done by a contract. And it's about time that we address the discrimination that is happening in this city when it comes to contracting. And we have the means to do it because we have the money, it's just a matter of we willing to do it. And so I'm not in favor of this unless it has a plan in it for minority contracting, and that there, again, are penalties and audits that are done, that are attached to it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Brian, for the presentation and for including Club de Porres in there. I guess people know that I may have some ties to you now, so there are some other diverse groups who are looking to build their businesses in this Innovation District. And you said we're starting at Chestnut Street to the MLK Highway is the blocks that will include the mile for the build-out, and the renewable energy sources that are in the MLK quadrant that you mentioned, what is that going to include? Is that stormwater build-outs or just what?
So they don't currently exist, those are things that we would like to include as we are building out in the area, and so we can look at things like, in the zoning ordinance currently, we have incentives to encourage developers to bring in renewable energy sources as part of their buildings, we can look at extending that to other avenues. There's grant money out there that we can apply for to pay for like electric charging stations for cars, the picture of the scooters with the solar panels for charging, we're looking at bringing in other forms of mobility into the city, and so being able to charge, whether it's scooters or bikes, what have you, providing better charging for those renewable energy sources, whether it's artwork that can incorporate that, which I've seen in other places. It doesn't currently exist, but it's something that we know can be done, and so now we need to go out and do it.
Okay, and then about the RFP process that you mentioned, is, who is the team to look at that, because the equity piece is of concern to not ensure that diverse groups get to participate inside of the district, but to also make sure that they're part of the build-out? So how is that being gauged or...
I believe that James Wright will be in charge of this as the city engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other colleagues that want to have a chance to speak? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, thanks, Mr. Swetz, for the presentation, and I know this is a culmination of months and months of work, your team, and as you mentioned, in collaboration with our economic development team. I appreciate that you have collaborated to host a lot of stakeholders, including neighbors who live in that area, and took aboard the questions, concerns, comments through the series of planning sessions that you, the public planning sessions that you held to gather that input. So thanks for that, I think the outcome of that effort puts us in a unique position to not just spend $24 million making the road pretty, but to spend $24 million to invite business into that portion of the city, a part of the city that frankly has been suffering from blight, from vacant property, and so an opportunity to turn something that has been an anchor, a drag on the city into something that we can all be proud of. Just to follow up on the vice mayor's question, so my understanding is that you really have no role in the procurement process for the hiring the folks that are going to do the $24 million of work, is that true?
I will not, and the planning department will not be involved, no.
Right, thank you.
All right, and Mr. Swetz, one thing I did want to make clear, procurement is primarily responsible for contracts, and we did do a minority study, and we talked about as a council, looking at policies that will ensure equitable contracting from procurement. So economic development's role is not really signing contracts or issuing contracts, they are generally the sales force of a municipality, so even when they submit or put an RFP on the street, that is still a procurable action, and it still has to be procured. Economic development doesn't determine who gets to do the job, that is through procurement, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we just need to make sure when we're saying things sometimes, we, as a council, have decided, yes, it is important, we did the diversity study to make sure that things were done appropriately, but we need to ensure also, as a council, when you all come to speak to us as staff, you are bringing us information to provide us so that we can make an informed decision. And I want to thank you and your department, economic development as well as planning, because I attended several of those sessions that you had with the consultant and citizens and businesses, and I thought it was extremely interactive to get, and it was a diverse group of individuals there to represent their concerns and to have something to say. I think it's now up to council, as we go ahead and move forward, to work on the policies that we determine will provide the equitable piece from a procurement standpoint. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, the comments you just made, I'm not going to let the issue be watered down to what you just said. The issue may not be that you are the procurement agent, and I know you're not, that's not the point. The point is that you're coming to us with a plan. Your plan does not include anything regarding minority contracting. Whether you're the procurement agent or not, you came up here initially saying you were working along with planning and economic development. If you're working along with economic development, economic development is involved with making sure that we have equity in our contracting, they're supposed to be. According to the presentation that Mr. Donahue had, they were going to consider the previous disparity study, even, the current disparity study, even though we had a previous one. And so I'm recommending to my colleagues, there's no rush to this, I'm recommending to my colleagues that unless we are intentional and take a serious look at this issue, it's not going to happen. And I'm asking my colleagues that we would request that Mr. Swetz, whoever you're working with, you're committing, that when you present this back to council with a minority participation plan in place, and although you're not the procurement agent, you need to get with whoever that is with procurement and make sure that it's included in this particular plan so that we'll be working at the front end on it, and we won't have to get involved in the process and then say, "Oh, we need to put it in place." It needs to be there at the front end. And so I'm asking my colleagues if we would ask for this to be tabled to, or deferred to a date which is conducive to this group to come back with a aspect of this plan that includes minority participation. Mayor, I'm asking for a consensus on that.
Before we call for that, Mr. Swetz, sir, you can have a seat, we do have a registered speaker, so we'll allow that registered speaker to come up on this item. The registered speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark, and Ms. Clark, if you would come forward, state your name and address, ma'am, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, members of council, Joanne Clark, Churchland Civic League. I'm intrigued, I wish you had done the consensus. I've attended the public sessions regarding the Innovation District, I think it's a very ambitious plan. We've seen a lot of ambitious plans in Portsmouth, particularly the waterfront. Over $10 million has been spent on the waterfront and the plan. The question is, whatever plan you vote on in the next year or two, will it be the plan that the next two councils still maintain and support, and in theory feel the same way about it? Because this plan is very detailed and has a lot of wonderful concepts to it, but there are a lot of things that are missing or that I find perplexing. Number one, like Dr. Whitaker said, it's the cost. These costs can be astronomical, and so we have to figure out what in this ambitious plan can assist and aid in the funding of it, that will not be the burden on the taxpayer. Now, I looked at this plan, and none of it was really clear about the funding mechanism, but what Mr. Swetz did not really focus on was the high density, the volume of residential development that they are planning to put into this project. I, like Dr. Whitaker, would like to see some policies involved in this plan. Number one, I think it should be somehow put up in your policy that the residential densities will be far less than the other mixed-use densities. All of us understand the infrastructure need for residents. I hope that we make a better mix of commercial and retail and arts and medical types of development where actually will pay for themselves in a five, 10, 20-year projection. And I hope that we find policies that get us to understanding those projections and how to base them. Right now, we have no idea how many bodies will actually be generated from the potential of this project, we have no idea how many children, or the age of the children, that will be generated from this plan. There are some wonderful things incorporated in this plan that are environmentally green, and I applaud them, but there's a lot of really important issues that are still yet to be addressed, those policies will, of course, be your responsibilities, and I look forward to attending future meetings on these so that we can give input. Me, I'd like us to not worry about 40... Me, I'd like us to not worry about 40 years ago or 20 years in the future. I would like us to, right now, get off the ground that safety center and implement that in this plan. I think it's, should be a priority to everyone in the city that when the chief was asked, the chief of police was asked, what can we do that can help you out? He said, give us a home. Put us all in one building. Put us on our equipment in one building. I hope you don't let this drag. I hope that you would make it a priority, incorporate that in this Innovation District, and make it so that people understand that your priority is our priority, which is safety. Businesses only come when they know that their staff will be safe, and the people who come to their businesses will be safe. It should be a priority, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. And once again, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, and you are not required to have signed up in order to come speak on this public hearing item. If you come forward, we just ask that you state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Are there any citizens who wish to come forward on this item? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Mayor, I, I move that we defer this, uh, item, uh, to a date that is, uh, suitable for the Innovation, um, District plan to come back with inclusive language, um, entailing minority contracting participation.
We need a second for the call of the consensus. Is there any additional discussion?
Well, that was a, that wasn't, that was a motion. That wasn't a consensus, that was a motion.
Okay, so you, you moved, but we, we, we're going, we would, we would still, the original request, you wanted a consensus, is that correct?
Right, but I-
In order to, in order to defer this item until we gain some further information that was, was asked for.
Right, but I put it in the form of a motion, though.
Okay.
Yeah, so-
So if it's a motion, it has to be seconded?
And it was.
It was.
And that's why I was getting ready to ask, it was motioned and seconded, then we asked for a discussion, and if there's no discussion, then we ask that you vote electronically.
I need a specific date when you want this deferred to.
Let me ask, um, Mr. Swets, where, where is he? I would say, I would say at minimum, it would be about 60 days, because you're gonna have to get with the city attorney. Um, economic development is, is not a rush unless you feel you can have something before then. But I hope it would be something substantive, and I don't think you can do that just in 30 days.
May, May 28th would be 60 days.
May 28th.
Yes, sir.
If I, if I could ask, that's very close to our budget adoption, can we?
Afterwards, that's fine.
It's the week after budget adoption. So do you want it to be June?
Yes.
Yes, first meeting in June would be fine.
First meeting in June?
Yes.
First meeting in June.
Yes.
That would be June the 11th?
June 11th, all right.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Councilman Hugel, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I, I guess my concern with the motion is that we're talking about creating some kind of equity thing related to this project only. I mean, equity isn't in our procurement, isn't just in the Innovation District. We have an equity issue across the board with our procurement. Seems that instead of tying this to the Innovation District, the action really ought to be to the city manager to, once and for all, work with the city attorney to create-
The policy.
Uh, a, a policy, an equity policy for our procurement process so that every procurement has the language in it that we need to get the data. Every procurement has the language in it to, uh, to, to penalize if, if, if we, uh, don't, don't, uh, have a responsive contractor to, uh, to, to, to meet targets. Uh, so, so, um, you know, I, I think we're in danger of creating individual things every time a new procurement comes along, and, and we just need an overarching statement from the city council, a policy that says, this is the way we're gonna do it for everything going forward.
You done, sir? Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
I just wish you would speak stronger on that when we were addressing that issue, because I agree with you, that, that, that we need to, and that's what we've been saying, we need to have this in place. And so, um, it's no need to vote on approving this without it being in place. And so I, I agree with that totally, what, what was just said. And that's even more reason not to vote and move this. And if during that time period, there's a development of what you're speaking to, it would, it would be applied to this. So I, I agree, I agree with that. Yeah, I agree with that.
Councilman Tillage, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with the comments that were, uh, made by Councilman Hugel. Um, I do think that we need to have a overall plan and policy for all projects, not just single-out projects as they come about. Um, if we're gonna make a Portsmouth a city that is equitable and inclusive, um, then we do need to have these policies in place. I also echo Councilman Whitaker's points that when we did talk about that, no conversations were had. And so I'm glad to see that we have the support to develop the, the plans for being more inclusive with our minority contracts and for women contracts, um, in our city. And so I'm saying all of this to say that I do support deferring this, um, until June. But in the meantime, I do think we need to have directives with our city manager and city attorney for us to begin to develop this policy so that we can also adopt that as well around that same timeframe. Um, because this, doing one-off projects is just nonsense. Um, and then we're picking and choosing who's gonna get what, how this is gonna happen, and that's just foolishness. And so, um, I do support deferring this, but we do need to also, uh, have the city manager, work with our manager to create a policy that is for all-inclusive for equity.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and I know that, um, before that, Madam Attorney, did you wanna, wanna, wanna add anything? Okay. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, um, um, my concerns are, I concur with my colleagues as well. Uh, we have been asking for, um, the policies to be included, to include language that would address any fines or penalties for those contractors who would violate, uh, the policies, like hiring somebody just to get the application process through, and then when the development, um, gets underway, that person is no longer on board. So I agree with the deferment, um, until we can get it in place for the procurement office and, um, with our, um, departments, um, that, that handle, um, that process. But my second part of the question is, I think the last time that, uh, Mr. Swets and Mr. Brian Donahue presented this, uh, presentation on the Innovation District, uh, the funds had not been, uh, deployed to us yet, so we don't have the $24 million to work with as of yet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a timeline on when, uh, we might receive that funding?
So I do not have an exact timeline for when the $19.3 million is coming from the federal government. I know that James Wright was contacted by the Federal Highway Authority two weeks ago, three weeks ago, saying that we are close to the top of the list and so that we should be expecting the funds soon. So what, yeah, what I do not know is what the rules are for, like, say, a timeframe for expending the money, either the federal grant or the money that we are getting from the state. I just know that, at this point, the city is not on the hook for any money. It's, it's just grant funding that we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Barnes, before you take your floor, sir, um, our city attorney would like to have a moment.
I just wanted to, um, ask council to consider a date, maybe two dates to deal with these matters. I can tell you that there is a minority business, business coordinator position that needs to be filled. We will, I will talk with the manager about how soon we could fill that, but that's gonna be pretty pivotal to what you all are asking. So if there can be some flexibility, we'll leave the date as it is, but some flexibility knowing that that position needs to be filled.
Yeah, that's, I, that's fine. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I concur with my, um, colleagues on this. I guess my question is, are we asking the, the city manager to move forth with, um, a policy for procurement?
Ms., Mr. Mayor.
Can you, they, we, we, they're just, the two of them are having a discussion. I'm gonna give you the floor, but she's just trying to get up to speed on an items. Madam Attorney, you, you, could, could you please indicate, um, what the process will be as we move forward?
I think what, uh, Councilman Barnes is saying is, what exactly is the motion now that we have these two ideas put forth? And I think the motion is a combination, which is, we are deferring as well as giving direction to the city manager in conjunction with the city attorney's office to create this minority business, um, policy, um, consistent with the findings of the disparity study, to be applied to all city contracts, not just procurement, but all city contracts and policies. And I think that is the motion. I, I will defer to Dr. Whitaker and, uh, Councilman Hugel, um, to, to concur on that.
To include this.
To include, right, which is why this is being deferred.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor. Are, are you through, Councilman Barnes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
I think just to clear it up, make it clean, the, the motion I made was to defer the, uh, issue that, that's being discussed, uh, that Councilman Barnes brought up. There's already, uh, been a directive, um, to the city attorney with the disparity study, that you're already supposed to be working on that. So that's not anything. So my motion is what's on the floor, and I think, uh, what Councilman Barnes is bringing up is that we just need to make sure that that's moving in that process as we go to this. So I think that'll simplify.
Absolutely, thank you.
And thank you all for clearing that up. So we have a motion and a second, I believe, on the floor to defer this discussion, um, on approving the resolution for the Innovation District until the June 11th meeting?
Yes.
Does that sound accurate, sir?
Yes.
Very good. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, just one more question to Mr. Swet. So is there any consequence to delaying to June? I mean, we're not ready to spend money because we don't have the money. Is there any, any other consequence to delaying the approval tonight till June?
No, as far as I know. I'm not sure what the rules are for, like, say, the, the timeframe for expending money for these grants, but-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. I would now ask my colleagues to please vote electronically.
The motion to defer until June the 11th has been adopted, 6-0.
We're now moving into the next item on our agenda, which is city manager's report. And before, um, we move forward with the city manager's report, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge Dr. L. Pettis Patton, who is joining us here on the dais as our interim city manager. Thank you, ma'am, for your work and for being here. We've- Wait, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call that out, and then normally I, I ask for this. So city manager report, item 24-dash-7-7. Um, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance establishing a personal property tax relief percentage of 50% for calendar year 2024 personal property tax bills.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item, item 24-dash-7-8. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting substance abuse block grant prevention, set aside funds in the amount of $2,900 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund Budget for Substance Abuse Prevention.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Item 24-dash-7-9. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, a resolution to amend the cost allocation agreement between the cities of Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Portsmouth, and Virginia Beach, and the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 6-0.
Now, item 24-dash-8-0. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution approving an agreement for mutual aid, fire, and rescue services among the localities of Hampton Roads.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. We're now moving to our new business section of the agenda. Item 24-dash-81, boards and commissions. Do we have any boards and commissions to consider this evening?
Yes, yes, sir, we do.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke?
Yes, we do. Um, with the appointment of our interim city manager, I move to appoint interim city manager, Dr. Lydia Pettis Patton, to the following boards and commissions. Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority, Community Policy and Management Team, Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, and Newport Community Development Authority.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Do we, are we?
We're good.
Is there any additional discussion? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to item 24-dash-82, items submitted by council members. Council members, do you have any items to submit at this time? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, uh, we received a report back from the city attorney regarding the, um, task force, uh, for Sugar Hill, and, uh, wanting to, um, put forth, uh, to the city attorney, just asking that process for, uh, putting persons on that task force. That's purely, uh, within council's authority to do that, so.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Well, I would, uh, Mayor, I would like to be appointed to that, uh, task force.
I think that there should be two, two people, and I think probably the mayor should be appointed to that task force as well, as well.
Well, I, I think it should be open to council to decide on that.
What, yes, sir, you're exactly right. And just like you said, you would like to be appointed, I, I indicated, I would like to be appointed.
Right.
So it would be, it would be appropriate for council to make those appointments.
Yeah, I was just looking for someone who's been in favor of working with that the whole time, that's why, that's why I brought that up.
Okay, sir. Thank you. We'll, we'll go through the other questions and we'll come back. Um, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Um, Mayor, I would, I just wanted to close out Women's History Month, so if my colleagues have some other pressing business- other pressing business, I will yield my time until then.
Right. And so we'll go through the other questions and then we'll come back. Because I think that in terms of, just a suggestion, in terms of appointing people to the commission or what have you, I think there certainly needs to be more discussion surrounding that. We can certainly make decisions tonight, but we need to be more inclusive and talk about how we go about the process. But go ahead. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I just want to show that I'm interested in, I'm joining this task force as well.
Very good, sir. So what we have as a discussion is a desire of council to create a task force?
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a question?
I was just gonna finish my statement, then I was gonna give you the floor, sir, if that's okay. So we have a desire of council to create a task force, and so we can move forward with the discussion. Sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if it would be appropriate at our next public work session where we can discuss it instead of, now that we've heard from the city attorney, have the discussion of who would be on it. And also, there was another aspect of it involving council for those residents who have been impacted by that. And so we need to have that discussion as well.
We can talk about that at the work session, of course. The answer is also in the motion as well.
Yeah, yeah. In that report, that dealt more with your role of representing council. But what I'm talking about is legal counsel that would be representing those citizens up there. And we can discuss it at the next one.
Thank you, sir. And Vice Mayor, certainly, I know you asked for the floor. It is Women's History Month.
Yes, sir.
Still, so ma'am, you have the floor.
Get one more day to celebrate Women's History Month, and it's something that we're happy about. So as we celebrate and close out Women's History Month, let us take a moment to honor the countless contributions that women have made throughout history, shaping our world in profound ways. We have been trailblazers. We have women who have demonstrated remarkable resilience and courage and determination in the first of adversity. And this month, we've attended so many events where we have been engaged with women, reading across America, serving our communities, the Phenomenal Women Events, and of course, in our churches where women have been honored all throughout the month. And to all of the women who have been recognized, or even those who have not been recognized, I encourage you to embrace your power, your strength, and your uniqueness. Your voices matter, and your dreams are valid, and your contributions are invaluable to our community and our city. So let us continue to support and uplift one another as we look towards our future, where every woman has the opportunity to thrive and to succeed, free from any kind of discrimination or prejudice. So Happy Women's History Month, and I look forward to greeting you again next year.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. I just have a few comments that I would like to make. Due to the recent appointment of a city manager, I didn't make any comments on Monday because there were a lot of emotions in the room. And I don't, I'm not a person that speaks on emotion. And so I just wanted to speak with you all tonight to talk about this matter. So due to the recent appointment of the city manager, I feel it necessary to address the regrettable dissemination of misinformation, misinformation, and unprofessional remarks made by certain individuals on this council, especially the mayor. After a thorough nationwide search conducted by our council with a reputable firm, Mr. Stephen Carter emerged as the top candidate. Mr. Carter brings over seven and a half years of service in Albany, Georgia, holding key roles including chief information officer, assistant city manager, and city manager. As a retired United States Air Force veteran with over three decades of experience in IT, strategic planning, and leadership, Mr. Carter's qualifications are exceptional. The assertion that another candidate was more qualified for the role solely due to local connections is ludicrous. Mr. Carter's outsider perspective offers valuable insights to tackle our city's challenges, and his diverse experience is crucial for progress. I also must address ongoing concerns that have troubled me since joining this council in 2023. Despite my hopes for positive change, Portsmouth's governance remains entrenched in old networks and vested interests. The promise of progress after the last election has been marred by antiquated power dynamics and resistance to meaningful change. The persistence and the tradition of a quote-unquote "good old boy" network looms large, hindering progress and upholding a status quo that fails to prioritize the needs of our constituents. I refuse to participate in a facade of unity that hides coercion and manipulation. Let's recall the mayor's promises from the last election. He sought a new council for meaningful change, endorsing myself and Admiral Hugel as collaborators. Despite you, the voters, granting him a five-to-two majority, it is clear his commitment to reform was empty rhetoric. As a council member, I have been faced relentless, excuse me, relentless pressure from the mayor to conform to his agenda. When I refused to compromise my morals and my values, he attempted to sow division, labeling me as difficult. The mayor is the common denominator of the dysfunction between the current and previous council, prioritizing personal ambition over the city's well-being, and fostering an environment of coercion rather than genuine dialogue. Last Monday, the mayor referenced his, and I quote, "personal" relationship with his preferred candidate, and said, and I quote, "I consider her to be a friend. When you are my friend, you are my friend." This statement highlights the urgent need to prioritize merit over personal connections when filling crucial positions. We must cease the practice of appointing friends and acquaintances to positions of authority, and instead focus on selecting the best qualified individual capable of effectively fulfilling their duties. I've become acutely aware of the troubling dynamics at play within our city. Some members of this council excel at crafting catchy phrases and emotional appeals to sway public opinion. Yet, they evade the transparency when asked to address critical issues. Inquiries regarding vital matters, such as the allocation of opera funds, the distribution of gift cards, undisclosed sponsorships, trash collection schedules, and public safety concerns are met with a dismissive response from the mayor citing non-interference in daily operations. Furthermore, the inequities in our tax system are glaring. Tax breaks for wealthy individuals and developers, coupled with undisclosed dealings surrounding tax abatements, have left the burden of funding our city disproportionately on the shoulders of its residents. The recent proposal to provide a meager five cent credit on real estate tax while simultaneously increasing water bills by 5% only exacerbates this disparity. Where is the true relief for the citizens? The citizens of Portsmouth have endured these injustices for too long. It is my earnest prayer that our Portsmouth family and colleagues on council will unite in unwavering support of our new city manager. We must begin to reject misinformation, which runs very rapid in this city, standing firm in our commitment to a united front for a vibrant and prosperous future. With that being said, in work session, I made mention to the need for a audit with a new city manager coming in. The city of Portsmouth has unfortunately experienced three permanent managers, not including interims, but three permanent managers just since 2021. It is only fair and fitting that our new city manager comes in with a clean slate, transparency, and a good understanding of all of our city records. So with that being said, I would like to move to add an item to the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add an item to the agenda, and so we need to vote on adding the item to the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor of adding an item to the agenda? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, five one.
Thank you. I move to direct the interim city manager to take necessary procedural steps to identify an auditor for the performance of a forensic audit of the city's finances and to determine the price of the audit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the item? Councilman Hugel, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, so I am not opposed to a turnover audit to clear the books from one city manager to another, but a forensic audit is conducted to gather evidence in the cases of criminal activity. Seems to me that we have no evidence of any criminal activity, and the only way we might gather even an indication that there's criminal activity is to conduct a turnover audit. The turnover audit surely won't cost as much or take as much time as a forensic audit, which frankly, could be very, very expensive. And given that we're supposed to be good stewards, I haven't seen any evidence to suggest that a forensic audit is warranted at this point.
Okay, sir, was that the end of your comment? Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Well, I think the intention is just to make sure that our finances are straight, but you kind of said it. Maybe we do need to find some criminal activity. You know, Councilman Battle was on council, and he said that we need to define the criminals. Well, here's our chance to find the criminals. I've been labeled one. Some others have been labeled one. Well, time to get me. If I'm that one, so I'm in favor of it.
Are there any other?
Oh, also, to go along with my council member Tillage, one of the biggest things, like he said, that it's been a turnover on council, and the mayor was granted a five-to-two pretty much vote to get anything done. However, what we've seen is divisiveness. Still the same drama. If you don't vote with him, it's trouble. He goes to the public, tell people to go after you on Facebook, tell people to do this, tell people to do that. It's just not okay. And I try to be cool with you, but you just don't learn. You just want to keep the city divided. You want to keep this council divided. And it's about time that we switch over to somebody who wants to bring us together. Because it's funny how your people is now coming together with the people that they said that was dividing the city. So maybe it's just you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Are there any other discussions we want to have on this item? Seeing none, I would ask that we vote electronically.
Mayor, before you all do that, you're adding an item to the agenda.
Right.
It's not a personnel matter, so you would need to open it up to the public.
Okay, very good. So because we're adding the item as the clerk indicated, it's not a personnel matter. So if there's anyone that wishes to speak on this item, you can come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Sherman Tyler, 1812 Parker Avenue. I agree on everything you said. That comment March 18th by this dais, after we sat in here and watched this dais, and I was proud of y'all, voted seven to one to have that firm. What Ms. Terry sitting in that very seat where she sitting there. Ms. Terry went along with it. She knew there was going to be a chance, that she was not going to get the job. She was fine. And once that firm brought them people along with Ms. Terry, it was the council job to decide who was better for the city. We put that power in your hands. So you don't get to pout and whine when things don't go your way. Everybody I vote for, I want the win. But unfortunately, it don't happen. And I deal with it. I don't get up here and whine and pout and try to break hurl seeds in a city that's already hurting. Our kids are dying every day. And we talking about somebody didn't get a fair shake when she sit on the dais a whole year, knowing, agreed with it. Had all opportunity to leave when y'all voted on how y'all voted. But she stayed. And y'all, we put the power in y'all hand to decide what's best for us, who's going to take this city to the next level. And four voted for this guy they got. And it's what it is. You don't get to whine and pout and tear up our city. This is our city. Some of y'all ain't even from Portsmouth. Y'all just landed here. We born and raised here, and you turn our city up with y'all mess. But I beg y'all, November, let's show up and show off. The same thing y'all told Paul Battle when y'all used him up and got with a good man for nothing. Y'all know Ms. Jones won't write. You know she won't write. She wasn't right. Land was sold without the four council members' vote. How did that happen? When you beating us up on our backs, on our real estate tax, but you gonna give somebody a property that's worth $3 million for $100 and some thousand dollars. And you wanna know why she's not here? Why she got fired? Why we got gift cards that folks just getting two years after the pandemic? And we questioning why she got fired? Now, that was true. She deserved that. But the rhetoric y'all put out about how this thing went after everybody up there voted, seven of y'all voted. Y'all were on the same accord, going the same way. And she agreed along with the way y'all was going. So once again, who I vote for in November, I want the win. But by chance they don't, I'm not gonna come in here and pout and throw kind of mess around at y'all because I didn't get what I wanted, like y'all did on March 8th. And you confuse the city. You made, I had a million calls. I can't believe that dead Ms. Terry like that. She never had a, she did have a chance. Her name was added along with the rest of them. And a man with 30 years in the military, working in that job, after the 30 years, he got seven more, and we questioning his ability? Stop him. Y'all stop it. Y'all know that man was more qualified. Y'all just didn't get what y'all wanted, so you're pouting. And you're sowing hurl seeds. Like I said, in the community, it's already broken. Our kids are dying, getting shot down like dogs, and we want to plant hurl seed and bring a city already divided. Let's get these people off the dais that's not, wasn't born and raised here. They don't know about the old herd hunt, Mr. Urquhart. They don't know about the old Woodrow Wilson. We know that because we from here. Let's get these people off this dais that wasn't raised in Portsmouth because they don't care about us. Because they care, you gonna bring peace and time of trouble. You gonna bring love and time of trouble. You gonna unite our people. They gotta bury their cherry every other week. What we do, we plant nonsense. In November, y'all, let's show up and show off. Let's take our city back. Let's take our community back. We're putting the right people in that spot that's gonna lead us in the right direction. We need somebody home bred, somebody that grew up here, somebody that came up from the sandbox here, that know what we feel when we cry, know what we feel when we hurt, you know? And I appreciate every one of y'all guys, all of y'all, all seven who voted that night, because y'all was on the same accord. Y'all was going the same way. And I thank God for y'all that night. I was proud of the whole council on how y'all did things. And Ms. Terry agreed. She said right then and agreed. And y'all said her name was gonna be added on with the rest of them, and she were happy with that. So you didn't get what you want. Now you're gonna create a whole bunch of nonsense amongst good people. Y'all should be shaming y'all staff for that, for doing what y'all did on the 18th of this month.
I wanted to speak on...
Please state your name and address, ma'am. Please state your name and address, ma'am, and you will have five minutes.
Sheila Joseph, 139 Grand Street. I'm a new civet lead for Fairfield neighborhood family. I decided to go forth. But I wanted to say to you, thank you for what you were just saying. I did not know you were going to speak on it, but I had to speak on it tonight. And I have been complaining to the city manager and to anybody that would listen to me about our water bill from the beginning of the monthly water bill up to now. And I can use myself for an example because I have proof that I'm paying my water bill on time or before time.
Point of order.
But the information that's going on, it creates hardship.
Ma'am, 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 we have a call. No, 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 please hold on a second.
Okay.
We have a call for a point of order.
Okay.
And so I have to deal with the point of order.
Okay.
So, sir, would you please state your point of order?
Mr. Mayor, so, so I think the speaker isn't speaking to the issue that is on the table right now. I think she's moved into her non-agenda speaker topic. I would suggest that we.
Wasn't he speaking about?
Ma'am, 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 please, please. No, 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 it's not your time to try. He has the floor, and we have to be in the proper order. He's doing his point of order, and then we'll rule on the point of order, and then that will be it, okay?
Mayor, can I, can I explain to her a little bit? Because she probably didn't understand the rudeness.
Well, 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 I'm going to explain it to her if you will allow me, once he gets through with.
But you were kind of rude to her.
Well, well, I have to, I have to allow for the point of order, okay? That's, that's what I'm allowing for. I'm running the meeting, sir, so please, complete your point of order, sir.
So my recommendation, Mayor, is that we invite Ms. Joseph to return during the non-schedule, non-agenda speaker schedule to speak to the issue unless she has something specific to talk to the motion that's on the floor.
Correct, sir. And because that is a point of order motion, and the motion, the point of order is accepted, you are scheduled to speak as a non-agenda speaker.
Right.
So you have the opportunity to come back. But because, unless you want to speak to the position of what we're talking about.
Maybe it's, maybe I'm not understanding, but I remember saying something about, I wanted to say about investigation on what some things going on with our, our, our bills and different things that is going on. And that's what I wanted to add, because it needs to be some type of investigation going on, how the funds is being spent and different other things that's going on in our city. That's what I was trying to say.
Okay.
Maybe I don't know how to articulate the way some people do, but I'm trying to say that because I had written it down, you know, about how long we addressed those things. Maybe I'm not saying it right, or maybe nobody understand what I'm trying to say.
Mayor, can I?
Okay, so, so first of all, you, you, if you're speaking to the item that we're discussing, you, you have an opportunity to speak to the item that we're discussing. That, that is the rule. If, if, if you want to speak to another item, you have an opportunity to speak to another item as a registered speaker under non-agenda speakers.
I will.
Okay.
And I'll just stop for now, but maybe I didn't interpret, but I, I'm asking for an investigation.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else who wishes to come and speak on this item?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and other neighbors. On more than one occasion, one council member or another has thrown this term forensic audit out into the public realm. And I'm not convinced in this occasion and on the previous occasions that the proponents really understand what they're asking for. I don't fully understand what a forensic audit is supposed to do. And I don't have any sympathy for the idea that some sort of widespread corruption has been occurring within the official city of Portsmouth as opposed to the elective I don't know if the preamble to the motion was supposed to be setting the stage for making the motion or just a venting of cumulative frustrations. But what I do know about forensic audits by previous discussion is that they tend to be very expensive. And if your concerns are what is coming out of the taxpayers' pocketbooks, then I would think you would want to consider this very carefully and not leap into it. I think it would be in order to ask what a forensic audit would cover and what it would likely cost and have a report back to council on that before taking final action on the audit itself. I have heard Councilmember Hugel's recommendation in, in the break between the work session and this meeting, and to me, that does not sound unreasonable at all. A turnover audit is a rather routine sort of procedure that often occurs, and you don't have to take out a multimillion dollar bond or loan to pay for it. So if, if that modification were made, I wouldn't have any concerns. But we really need to have, the public needs to have a good idea of what is contemplated, both in terms of scope, expected results, and in the bottom, at the bottom line, the cost to the taxpayer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And are there any other speakers that wish to come forward and speak on this item? Yes, ma'am. You state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
My name is Donna Biggs, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Just want to say, y'all don't mind wanting to spend the regional jail all that money, but you don't want to have a forensic audit. We need to have an audit. You got rid of the auditor so you can spend your money like you want it, not like we want it.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Making sure it's the right height. My name is Merrill Redlich, 2024 Conservative Way, Republican, Virginia. I think a more simple way to handle this forensic audit is something that's really where the whole public should be really involved. It's called the Freedom of Information Act. So instead of all of these different ways y'all call, call for exemptions, why don't y'all open up all these books and records for the public to determine if they see criminal activity? Do they see a waste of funds? Because most of the records that y'all keep from the public eye is exactly what the public needs to see. A forensic audit does no good unless there's an investigator that's free of any kind of affiliation with any one of y'all. The investigator must be able to look at any and all records and not be hamstringed by somebody who is hoping that something is not found. But the fact is, a forensic audit may cost a lot, but it seems like most of Portsmouth been asking this same question for decades. Decades. What has the council been up to? How's the money being spent? And all these rumors? See, the rumors is killing y'all. See, I'd rather have a small group based off of fact and truth than a crowd of rumors. If you want to dispel all the back and forth and back and forth, why don't you put a motion to the city attorney to allow for any and all records to be inspected by the public without any kind of exemption when it comes down to the financial records that go on within the city and how money is spent down to the last penny? You can save yourself a lot of money. I'm pretty sure a lot of people within the city would love to take their time out just to inspect these records and give you back a full report. And I would love to take part in that. I definitely will, because that's why I do. And I could guarantee you, I could find out every single red penny that was spent in a way that's questionable. So I could tell you, you could pay hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions, or you could pay me nothing and allow me to have my own team and say, let's get to work. But see, y'all scared of that. It's not about giving us the records or having a forensic audit, it's about y'all finding a way to cover it up. That's what most of the people in this room would be spending money on. So until you are able to meet that challenge and say, it's time for me to stop the rumors and find out for a fact and give the truth to the public, you're going to look like what y'all always looked like. Y'all covering up for yourselves and ain't caring about nobody else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We, we all understand, we want to give our new city manager a clean slate, and we want to do that fair and equitably and responsibly, fiscally. So I would ask of my colleagues if we could provide an opportunity for interim city manager to provide the cost relative to a turnover audit versus a forensic audit before we move forward on which one we would proceed with. I think that would do our citizens well. I think it would do this council well to move in that direction. I did receive a phone call today, and I was surprised that the call came in from Albany, Georgia, and, and I was like, wow, Albany, Georgia, that's where our new city manager's coming from. And so I took the call, and it was from a member of council in Albany, Georgia. And he said, you don't know me from a flea on a dog, and I don't know you from a tick on a horse. And just talking about the conversation, he said, you're getting a very good gentleman, someone who is smart, someone who is strong, someone who has come in and turned our city around for the better in three years. And he's, they pretty much said that you're getting the best that we have. And I know that you're going to be pleased with him. And he vowed to me to take his number, save it in, and give him a call back in three to six months and tell me how pleased we are with this gentleman. So we want him to have a fair start with his position, but we want to do that in a fair and equitable way for our council as well. So if our council colleagues would allow our interim city manager and me, perhaps our city attorney, to investigate how much the cost between these two audits would, would cost before we proceed.
Thank you, ma'am. And Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I concur with the motion that Mr. Tillage has raised, and I believe what the vice mayor is raising, I think that can be incorporated by if there's an issue that the city manager feels needs to come to our attention as a result of putting out the RFP for the forensic audit. If she feels that something needs to come to council's attention, she can bring that to our attention. But I think what Mr. Tillage has requested, I think, is needed, and I think that's a way of us moving forward with it, with still taking care of your concern if the city manager feels that it's something of concern that needs to come to council's attention. So I ask that we would support this.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, with all of the back and forth, I'm lost on what's on the floor right now. Could the clerk read the current motion that's on the floor so we know what we're voting on, please?
There was a motion by Councilman Tillage and seconded by Dr. Whitaker, and it is for the city manager to take steps to look at the cost of a forensic audit. And from the discussion, to also look at the cost of a takeover audit in comparison and the, and bring back to city council that information. And if something in between takes place that the manager needs to bring to your attention, she is to do that.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, I think maybe Mr. Tillage might want to repeat the motion, because I don't think that was, that was, he has it in writing what his motion is.
It was kind of long, so.
So my motion was to direct the interim city manager to take the necessary procedural steps to identify an auditor for the performance of a forensic audit of city finances to determine the price of the audit. So all, so what we're doing, we're asking her to identify.
An auditor?
An auditor for the performance of a, of a forensic audit.
And the cost? So you're not wanting a RFP, you want her to find the auditor for the?
So can we, 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 we determine what the clarity is on this item, please?
Okay, I'm going to read it again. The motion is to direct the interim manager to take the necessary procedural steps to identify an auditor for the performance of a forensic audit of the city finances and to determine the price of the audit.
So, so I have a question. Once, once an auditor is identified and a price is identified, does that then initiate the action of doing the forensic audit, or does that require another vote?
That is a great question. That is, no. So you would have to come back to council in a form of an ordinance at the next council meeting. So this is not to vote to do the audit, it is to identify and to find the cost to do the audit.
Okay. Very good. So we have the motion on the floor, we have a second. And I would ask, Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
So did the vice mayor then try to amend that motion to include finding a price for a turnover audit? I think I heard that, but I didn't hear her say she wanted to amend the motion.
Because she, because she didn't say she wanted to amend the motion.
Okay. Then I want to amend the motion. I'll amend the motion to include finding a price for a turnover audit.
You need a second for that, sir. So we're, so, so we don't have a second on that, so we're back to the original. So I would ask all my colleagues to please vote electronically.
This item is adopted four to two.
Thank you. Are there any more items to be submitted by council? Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Just, just a quick follow up with the city attorney on the historical designation of Bernard Griffin. Is that still Bernard Griffin Park? Is that still with the state agency?
It is still with the state. We've heard no answer on that, but I've been told no news is good news.
Okay, all right. And then my last statement, I failed to mention at the last council meeting, wanted to recognize Mr. James Bridgeford, who passed. Mr. James Bridgeford, who passed on February 3rd, long-serving servant here in the city, one of the longest-serving officials in the city. He was appointed to the school board when school boards were appointed. He served with my father as an appointed member of the school board, and then he was later also elected to the school board when that was changed. Just want to honor his service and to recognize the service that he gave to the city as probably one of the longest-serving officials in the city.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So since we spent so much time talking about audits tonight, Madam Interim City Manager, I'm wondering if our annual comprehensive finance report for 2023 has been completed yet?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, the city's portion for the annual audit is complete. We're working with the schools to get their participation and information that must be in our audit also. So I have not spoken to Dr. Bracy in regard to that, but I will speak with him and let him know the timeframe, that it's very imperative we get this information and complete it.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, Dr. Patton, just to let you know, council was updated on that previously, that our portion was completed, we're waiting for the school board portion.
And the last thing that I had on the... Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. And, Dr. Whitaker, I was informed today that a person who has been working with the school board on it is no longer with the schools. So when there's a change and we've had it on our side, when someone that's critical, so that's why I want to follow up and let him know, and I feel comfortable we'll get it.
Okay, thank you. And there was a citizen regarding, some folks from the Mount Hermon Civic League wanted to kind of get an update on, and you can give us a report back on the expenditures for the Bernard Griffin Park, there's some dollars that are on, that are still available, and they just wanted to get an update on the dollars, and I'll share that with you. Are there any other items to be submitted by council? I do have a couple items. First of all, as our presentation was taking place earlier, I want to thank a couple of our city staff, Erin Cohen and Greg Gadberry, those are our video service team members who do a great job and did a great job with the video. Also want to thank Peter Glagola, our marketing director. Peter oversees those guys, and I can tell you that they do great work consistently throughout the community to deliver information to our citizens, so thank you to the team. Also want to acknowledge the Bunny Hop, the children's museum's signature fundraiser. The Bunny Hop took place last Saturday, rain or shine. Thanks to all the people who participated in the Bunny Hop and made it a success, and we appreciate that. And there was a meeting of the Naval Shipyard Museum, Friends of the Naval Shipyard Museum. A great turnout, great information was given out, and that's a wonderful place with a wonderful history. So if you ever get a chance to go to the Naval Shipyard Museum, I think you would appreciate the visit. That concludes the items submitted by council. Dr. Patton, do you have any report on pending items?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Hoag to come out, come up and give a report back on some items that were brought to the public's attention through council, but I think it's important that we follow up and let the public hear the resolution to items that come forward. Council has been getting the reports, but I think it's important, and she will begin that tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. These are items that you requested information back on from the previous council meeting. The school zone sign on Peninsula Avenue and London Boulevard, that sign was placed on February 28th, 2024, at the corner of Peninsula Avenue and London Boulevard. Excuse me. Availability of trash and recycle cans, there are currently no wait times for either trash or recycle cans. Historical marker in Truxton, General Services and Public Works have taken the lead on this project. The city is providing a new monument base instead of repairing the base that was hit. The BHS School Therapist Program is pleased to announce the next steps for our RightTrack program. RightTrack is a school-based therapy program that provides a thorough intake, assessment, financial screening, and outpatient therapy support while the students are in school. The program allows for individual and family group sessions. Two of the three licensed therapists who will provide the service have been hired by BHS. Leadership has met with principals at the four schools where the program will begin. Those schools are Douglas Park, Waterview, Craddock, and Craddock Middle. The first therapist will go to Waterview Elementary School within the next 30 days. The review current recreation plan in closing the current pool at the Sportsplex, beginning back in the fall of 2021, staff looked into the possibility of constructing a brand-new Cavalier Manor Recreation Center to replace the current center and gymnasium and to add a swim complex. Part of the recommended plan for the new facility included an aquatic center, aquatic center, the conceptual rendering of what that looked like is attached, well, it was attached on your copy. To date, staff has not been given direction to proceed with the design, nor has funding been appropriated. We have been given direction on renovating the current center and gym to make it more usable. The Sportsplex Pool, which was built in the 1940s slash 50s, is not up to modern standards for the competitive swimming. We would need a 25-yard pool with 10-foot entry depth for starter blocks to allow for the school swim teams to safely use it for practices. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Hoag. And one thing before we move into the next item, which is non-agenda speakers, I want to make everyone, our citizens, aware that we lost one of our special citizens, Ms. Helen Person. Ms. Person, if you recall, was very instrumental in bringing about the successful lawsuit against the lead at Washington Park, and it resulted in Washington Park being closed down and razed, and those individuals being put in better environments. So don't forget, Ms. Helen Person, she was a dynamic leader who did not take no for an answer, from what I understood, and so we want to just make sure that we acknowledge her and the work that she did in our community. The next item, item 24-84, non-agenda speakers, and, Madam Clerk, would you please read the non-agenda speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you'll notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. Our remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to complete his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker this evening will be Mr. Barry Randall Jenkins. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Barry Randall Jenkins, the Brighton Printers Park section of the city. Good evening. So glad to have Dr. Patton back, and before I get into my comments, I think this council also should take some type of thought as to how to help Mr. Carter be successful. I believe a lot of people gonna try to, you know, keep stuff from him, so just my suggestion, you know, that you all allow Dr. Patton to kind of help him out a little longer than, you know, so that he can focus on what he needs to know, because she knows our city, and I think it would do us a great service if we have someone making sure that things are getting done. I want to talk because I was put out of the last council meeting back in February, the last council meeting that we had. I think it's interesting to note because if the mayor likes your comment, he will allow you to talk. Even we've sat back and we watched the buzzard go off, and if he liked what the person is saying, he allowed them to continue their thought. If he doesn't like what you're saying, he ends your comment, or he will try to put you out. I'm hopeful that this mayor will learn from his mistake this afternoon in the circuit court. I filed a $50,000 lawsuit against Mayor Shannon Glover for violation of my freedom of speech. It was embarrassing, I had council people from other locale that watched the thing on the TV and what have you, say, you know, Barry, you didn't do anything wrong, and everybody was concerned like I am. They was like, they don't even understand why Mayor Glover was so upset, because they said, Barry, you wasn't even talking about him, you was talking about Mimi Terry, and I think that's what the issue is. But nevertheless, I think we really need to really understand that you can't pick and choose who you want to put out of a meeting. It has been evident, I think the mayor even put some of you all out of me, or at least tried to put some of you all out of meetings, but I heard something that Ms. White Red, and she's just doing her job, where it say, you don't call people by name. But if you all remember back during the collective bargaining meeting, Mayor Shannon Glover called to one of the gentlemen in the audience and told him how he helped his son when he needed help. So I think it's very hypocritical when we try to, you know, figure out what we're gonna do and what we're not gonna do. Sitting back over there in my seat, I'm sitting here listening to how things are going, and I think we gotta be mature. I'm still trying to figure out who I was gonna support for city council, and don't worry, I ain't even running on a treadmill, so I think I'm ruling that out. But I'm sitting back over there, and I said to myself, I get it, this is why a lot of people don't like Councilman Mark Whitaker, and even he and I have had our disagreements, but I think that we need to do the right thing. And Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke, I think you could benefit from Councilman Whitaker serving with you when you become mayor. So, Dr. Whitaker, you will be getting my vote, and one thing that you all know about me, if I say something, I'm going to do it. I think that if we all can come together, may need to keep everybody that's up there except for a few, because I was told that individuals that know how the former interim city manager disrespected many of you all, because she always told people she worked for Shannon Glover, and how individuals would still say that they will support Mimi Terry. I think that's very sad, because that mean you have a hidden agenda. But this is not a sprint, it's a marathon, sir, so you will see more of me, and you know, I'm gonna talk truth to power, and I think at one meeting, I heard the mayor say, be careful what you say, because I'll sue. Well, I'm gonna be bringing some information forward, and if I'm lying, make sure you sue.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sherman Tyler. Sir? You come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Sherman Tyler, 1812 Parker Avenue. I cannot pretty much say what I wanted to say, but I want to say this, and I want to make this clear, because I'm a real guy and I believe in the truth. At one point, I was going a different way, I really was. I was going a different way, you know, in my vote for November. But as I listened and as I began to, you know, hear some stuff and begin to investigate certain stuff and to just, you know, really what changed my mind, I really believed that on March 18th, them comments that three of y'all made, you know, like I said, it was just, it was just, it shows that y'all dealing with petty politics. Who does that? Who get to come up here and whine when they don't get their way? I want a million dollars, but I ain't got it. No, I ain't even gonna whine about it. You don't get to whine. When things don't go your way, you don't get to bring heresy, and that's what y'all bought. And y'all know what y'all did. Y'all know with them comments what's gonna do. That's why you did them. That's why you did them, you know? Had so many people, why they do that to that woman, that woman? It's like y'all did once again with Ms. Jones. Y'all got up here with this pulling on the strings of our heart. Ms. Jones bought her house in Portsmouth and took her chance on Portsmouth and all this kind of crap. And the whole time, she's selling property without the councilmen votes. It's seven councilmen up there. How that land get sold? If this man was clearly said, that's one of the reasons why they voted her out. So how would that land sold if the council ain't vote? I thought everything's supposed to go with the vote. So it need to be a forensic audit. Yeah. Because we need to know why our house, property tax, we barely, we barely keeping our homes. We barely making it on our personal property taxes on our homes, but you gonna give somebody some land for $2 million of discount. So we need to look into that and see what's going on with that. Because I thought by y'all bylaws and y'all rules, that any kind of finance, any kind of property, our budget, all that supposed to be brought in by council, right? So how would that land sold? Can anybody tell me that? And one more thing, the city will work fine and perfect if you know your job. The city manager does not work at the pleasure of the city clerk, she don't work at the pleasure of the city attorney, she don't work at the pleasure of the mayor, she work at the pleasure of the seven council members. Period. And once you forget that and get hooked up in these cliques and these isms and these schism, of course you gonna lose your job. Of course you gonna lose it, because you supposed to be working for all of us, all of us supposed to matter. You don't get to, you don't get to not, you don't get to ignore Dr. Whitaker because you don't care what he's saying, you work for him. You don't get to do that. You know how the bosses I didn't like, but I had to work for them because I wanted to get paid? They were gonna fire me if I didn't obey. So I matched the new city manager, and you're listening, I know you are, because you're a smart man. Don't come to this council and get caught up in these isms and these schisms. You got laws that you gotta abide by, abide by them. If it runs, this council member may it, abide by your rules. If it runs, the mayor may it, abide by your rules. And what you supposed to do to leave this city in a better place? And it's all we want. We want some of that $24 million y'all were talking about, we want some of that money to be brought on Demons Avenue, on Parker Avenue, on Atlantic Avenue. We don't want all that money on High Street. When we are the people putting y'all, often y'all putting the money on High Street, bring that money in our community. We the one putting y'all up there, and y'all ignore it like we nobodies. We make it possible for y'all to hold them seats. Bring some of that money, you will put on High Street with all these lights and all this mess, bring some of that round there in the ghetto and give these people some hope. Put some sidewalks on Demons Avenue, on La Ceeo. Fix that big pothole you got in Hope Village, you can't even drive in Hope Village. Big pothole, big as a car most. I got, I was going to curb to get into Hope Village. You talking about spending $24 million on High Street and not investing in our community where our kids dying it every single day? But anyway, I'm done, but hey, come November, Ms. Burke, I'm voting with you, I'm for you, I believe in you. Whitaker bonds, I'm for y'all. I'm for y'all. Continue on what y'all do.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldy Getrowski. Mr. Getrowski, sir, if you come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening again, mayor, council, and other neighbors. I should state my name and address because I forgot to do it last time, so caught up in the milieu. Mark Godoldy Getrowski, Peel Box 50141, Portsmouth, 23703. So I read through a lot of pages in the complaint that the former city manager, the former full-time city manager filed in court, and I found a lot of deeply disturbing allegations in there. I judged that manager to be a person who dealt intrus- I judged that manager to be a person who dealt in truth. She was a person of integrity insofar as I could see, and she knew her business. But four members of the previous council, for reasons of their own, poorly explained, when they did give an explanation, voted to fire her. So I hope there will be some reckoning in the court and that justice will be done. But I want to say this. The opportunity for the toxic interactions that were described in that bill of complaints came about because of the practice of council members meeting one-on-one with the city manager. And I believe that this is an area where reform is necessary. I believe that when the city manager meets with a member of council, there should be a deputy city attorney present so that there will be a, an impartial person in the room and some of the things that were alleged would not happen there. We burn through talent in this city at an unconscionable rate. I've been here, this is my 28th year as a resident of Portsmouth. I've seen a number of city managers, city attorneys and city assessors come and go and not because of incompetence on the part of the people in those positions, but because of council vendettas, because of loud voices in the community that were not representing any majority of citizens, because of personal grudges. And it's not right. And it's not fair to the taxpayer because every time we do a search to replace the talent that is lost, it costs us money that we could be putting in other places. I don't appreciate it. I want to see my tax dollars used efficiently and effectively. One member of council talks about the high poverty rate in this city, and there are statistics to back that up. But we are not doing the poor members, the poorer members of this city, any service by wasting our money on lawsuits and on severance packages and on searches to replace people who are doing good jobs. So if you can't hear that, I hope your successors are hearing that and will make that part of their campaign platforms. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Just for a point of information, and the lawyer's probably gonna kill me for this, but I just want people to know that most of that lawsuit has been stripped down and is pretty much over. So it's nothing to see.
Our next speaker, Mr. Sergio O'Neal. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I am Sergio O'Neal. I reside at 1420 Elm Avenue in the city of Portsmouth. First of all, I am in awe struck. Dr. Patton, welcome back. Thank you so much for you and the Berkeley group for putting, in layman's terms, holding this city down and, and getting us into the next era of city management. I'm quite sure your successor will be very well prepared and listening to what your very, your many years of experience here in this city and helping us get to hopefully a, a better direction than what we've seen. You know, I'm kinda, I don't know whether to be embarrassed or pissed off or just whatever, but I, I can tell you this. Because see, some people, you know, they, they, they hear that, oh, I'm for diversity and inclusion and equity, and they just go run with it. But make no mistake about it, don't use that to mask what you doing behind the scenes and don't use that to play on people's intelligence. Don't use that to try to hide what you do because some of us know better. The sad part about it is, is that not enough of us come forward and vote or go to court to make sure that those people that are doing that are no longer serving this city. So let's just make that clear. So y'all, y'all can play with people who don't know no better, but the ones that do, don't worry. November is coming very soon. I hope Mr. Carter, the new ma, city manager, is paying close attention and to see why Portsmouth is where it is right now, why the distrust is in this city and this government. Because the blame lies with, with a few people in certain positions in this city. A couple of people on this council. And, and let's make no mistake about it, I personally wish that we could turn the city manager position into a, an elected position where the citizens vote who the city manager is. Because we have a vote of no confidence in this city council to find a person to really do their job without interference like it's supposed to be done. Because see, like we, like we know, if a city manager does not do a job, how you personally think it should be done? Whether it's actually right, whether it's the right way they are, that they are doing it, does it align with your view? Then you, some of you are forming this group and get rid of them. Then you prey on the poor people, say, oh, we gotta do another search to make sure that da-da-da. Mr. Getrowski hit it right on. It costs a lot of money performing those searches. It do. So why we worried, why we saying, oh, you know, well, we here for the poor people, we here for diversity, inclusion, da-da-da. But yet someone make sure I suspend, spend some more of your money, find somebody that's gonna bow to my will. See, this ain't your church. You can't do that in the city government. You might can do that with your deacons and your elders and all that, but you can't do that here. Right? Feel where I'm coming from? You can't do that because this not your sports league. You can't run the city government like you do your nonprofit. Okay? So I'm just making that point clear because we're not gonna put up with it. So because see, a lot of times, you know, we have this misnomer about, oh, you know, we're, we're for moving this city for, and you know, I, I really try my hardest, you know, to speak with positivity and, you know, enlightenment and education. But here, here's the fact of the matter. You know, sometimes you gotta give it to people how it really truly is. You know, because when you spinning circles, you play with people emotion, you know, you flash a little money in their face, well, some of y'all that do, you know, that people tend to forget what's really going on. But see, you can't do that with me because I can't be paid off. I go to work every day. I'm good where I'm at. I do what I do for free. And let, let me be perfectly clear. One thing you will not do from this day forward is play with the people emotions in my community no longer. Because I guarantee you, you will be out of here one way or another.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Barnes, you have the floor.
Just for a point of information, when any council picks a city manager or any position, it's normally going to align with the needs of what they're looking for in the council, what they were put in office for, I mean, the things that they want. The, the key is that you have to get three members of council or more to go along with that, but you also, they also have to meet their criteria. As far as what council did as far as picking a, a new city manager, we had three good candidates, actually four, and one dropped out. And out of those three that were still left, we picked the best candidate based off of the criteria that we feel is best for the city. I'm, I'm confused of how every time that when people don't get their way or their handlers don't get their way, they send people to come up here and talk and say that somebody's doing something wrong or doing something dirty or doing something illegal. What we have to learn to do in this city is to disagree without being disagreeable. There was actually an unlikely group of four that pick this new city manager. I'm confused of why every time, again, in this city, when those that don't get their way, send people up here to talk a certain way, to act like there is something illegal going on in this city. It's not. And if it is and you have the information, please provide the information. I get tired of people talking about all the time he's talking. That's a, he kicked Barry out for that, so he should be kicked out for that.
Sir, 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 sir.
He should be kicked out, right?
Sir.
Because Barry got kicked out for the same thing.
Sir, sir, I have the floor. I don't, I do not need you to instruct me on what to do.
I hope you do what's right, but that's his handler, so that's why we gonna leave him in here.
Mister, sir.
Point of orders.
Excuse me. Officers, could you take him out of the room, please? Could you have him removed?
He's threatening me? I'm very scared.
Can you have him removed, please?
You know, there's a saying that when you throw a rock in a pile of dolls, the one that hollers, the one that got hit.
Yeah, I'll catch you out there, I'll tell you.
I don't stand.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Dr. Bill Dodson.
Hi, Dr. William Dodson, Box 3269 Portsmouth, Virginia, 3270, 23701. God, that's a great thing to follow. Thanks, guys. New city manager, Dr. Patton, welcome. I, I hope your visit goes well with us. Couple of you handled the meeting very well tonight. I wanted to address the motion that was on the floor here from Mr. Tillage. Nice idea. I'd really like to see an audit myself because the public opinion out here is that there's something going wrong. So we'd like to see, I'm sure that most of the public agrees with you that we'd like to see an audit. I'm just not sure that the forensic audit or the way you worded the motion is, is workable. It requires, it requires a, I forget the letters that y'all use for a contract to be awarded. RFP, thank you, the RFP to be awarded for something like that. So you might want to consider rewarding that more, motion to make it more workable at the next session. I'd appreciate it. In addition, I brought some books for you. I know you'll, appreciated the books I've had before because I've seen you discussing them and a couple of you have called me to express your appreciation. I brought you some more books tonight and it's one, a book, Who Moved My Cheese, that really moved me. I know a few of you have already read it and you've already told me you've read it. So if I give you a copy and you've already read it, please pass it on to someone. It talks about change and how to handle it and the wonderful ways we deal with it today. So if I could give this to you and pass it out, I hope you enjoy it as much as I enjoyed it.
Just pass it to the sergeant-at-arms. He'll distribute it to everyone.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sheila Joseph. Ms. Joseph, ma'am, come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. Thank you for the opportunity to try to express some things that I was, had a lot going on about our utility bill. I've been addressing about the water bill from the time, from monthly on up to now. And I have documents of my receipts and I asked the previous city manager and then I think I spoke in here about that I need someone to work with me about that. And what it is, you paying the bill on time or before time, but never late since the month-to-month service. But by the time you pay the bill, you getting a bill with two amounts that, one, you already paid and you're not late, but they double charging you. And I spoke about the third party. Okay, I remember it was a time we didn't have a third party and we had the water company handling the bill. But I was a pain in the side, I'll put it that way, concerning that because I learned how the bills was being used and how people was, take a few pennies and add it to the bill to make it look like a new bill, but have the same billing cycle. And it's still going on. And for not to have a person that we can go to, they said the third party is the one that doing it, so they only accept the money and print out what you asking for. But I have paperwork to show that my water bill, when we pay it, and then if I'm paying it in advance and have credit for it, what'll happen is they take it when they want to and not before you know that they are doing it. You're thinking that when you put money on the credit that it's gonna come out, like say, if it's due on March the 8th, they'll take it, you know, like January, for January and February and March haven't even got here. So I got all that kind of stuff on my bill and there's so many other people, it's not just me in this city, have been going in the office complaining, but the people down there can't do nothing about it. So I want to find out who can do something about the third party that's doing the bill and get this stuff straight because we are finding ourselves spending money and we don't want to withhold the money that they asking us for because then it'll create a problem for your bill to be held up or cut off. I did say that I started an investigation on the gas company doing stuff like that and I contacted SCC and they investigated for a year. But I, I know it's, we have a SCC for everybody, but I, I don't know if it's for Portsmouth Water Bill or not to investigate them, but I would like to see something straightened out because I remember back in the 19th of December, put $335 credit on my account and the bill was paid for November and when December came, I was paying for December and January. I, I need some understanding on what they are doing as a third party and we, why as a consumer, we can't have a number to talk to somebody as a third party. I feel that you need to get rid of them. Thank you. I would like some answers, though, about the transformer too. We was addressing that and we supposed to got back with me, nobody done that too. I wanted to mention it. The transformer is not doing nothing but creating a problem in the home and damaging things in your home. And a lot of homeowners don't understand that. I, I still want some answers. And Dominion is the one in charge of it. I don't hold the city, but the city give them the right of way to come to our home.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, um, to our interim city manager, I, I believe I know what Ms. Joseph is speaking to and I, I get with you, the way the, what she's talking about sometimes, the way the bill comes and it'll show two amounts up there, yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Hoag, will you please get Mrs. Joseph's phone number? I have notes on it and we will follow up with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Biggs. Ms. Biggs, yeah? Come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Biggs and I live in, in the Woodbine Farms. You know, I'm a researcher. And we, the people, need an action plan to ensure that the elected and appointed will communicate- and appointed will communicate with the civic leagues for the greater benefit of the Portsmouth community and the city, and the city, because the elected and appointed have sworn to do their oath of office. Our Bill of Rights give the people the authority to self-govern. This is why I have stopped speaking at city council on issues affecting our community, because there is no order of operation at all, including spending and taxing we, the people, without our knowledge and consent. The first level of government is the right and duty of the individual to self-govern. The second level is right and duty of parents. The parent's duty is to maintain the integrity of the family structure by the bond of holy matrimony, and these bonds include meeting the emotional needs of each other, so God's law forbidding disrespect is respected. The parents and extended family members are to be economically self-sufficient before bringing a child into the world. It is their duty to be able to protect, teach, feed, clothe, and provide shelter for their child and children. And lastly, our city has grown by annexes. And here are the annexes. And what I find, that the separation of a city could be taken care of by leaders creating a structure of belonging. Well, how do you do it? Here's an action worksheet, that people living in each one of these annexes come together with an action worksheet, and discover what that community's gifts are, like athletics, or farming, or being smart. So one would be an action worksheet to get all the groups together to see what kind of gifts they have as a group. And then next, after they discover what kind of gifts they have in their group, come together and see how to pull it together, so that they know how to work together with their giftedness. So y'all made an oath of honor, oath of office, that y'all gonna pay attention to the people. But I don't know how y'all gonna do it, because y'all make a decision to do it yourself. You don't come and ask us what we need in our community, and then implement it. If y'all wanna know about the structure, I got it. Ask me.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Merrill Rutledge.
My name is Merrill Rutledge, 2024 Republican way, conservative, Virginia. I want to address a statement that was just made earlier. I was at first not gonna speak, but now, thinking about it, I should. I see people all across the state talk about we divided. And I see that cancer has spread here to local politics. Of course, Mr. Barnes, you said the same exact thing, that we have too much divisive rhetoric. I believe more than ever, right now, we are more united than ever before, not divided. If you go to a grocery store right now in the city of Portsmouth, or anywhere in Virginia, can you really afford the groceries? I don't think we divided. If you go to a doctor's office, and they prescribe you medication, you're having a hard time finding the money, aren't you? I don't think we divided. If you're a police officer, seeing all the shootings and killings and the dead bodies, I don't think we that divided, because the community sees the same exact thing. But I see people want to spread the cancer rhetoric that we are divided. Well, let's go to another level. If you have a business here in Portsmouth, are you scared to open because you worried about getting robbed, losing all your hard-earned money? Or are you worried about your personal property taxes, because you on a budget, but see, your budget's out of control now? Now, every time, right, you go to the grocery store, and you pick up eggs, it used to be two dollars, now it's four dollars. I don't think we divided. When Baltimore lost the bridge, a lot of people lost their bridge. They are homeless right now in shelters on the street. Many people right now ain't too far away from that point. But I guess some of y'all would say we divided. We ain't divided. We all struggling mentally and physically. What is dividing us is people saying that we are divided, because y'all don't spend enough time bringing us together, and recognizing that we are going through the same thing. And the question about these audits and everything else is about, why ain't y'all going through the same thing? See, leaders don't care about sowing division or hate. They care about recognizing what brings us together. I just brought you some issues that bring us together, because y'all worried about driving on the same roads I do. You worried about going to the same grocery stores I do. You worried about your rent increasing to the point that you get kicked out, because you worked hard all your life and thought your retirement was good enough. I don't think none of us divided, because we don't even think we gonna ever retire. So when I hear the rhetoric of people saying that we are divided, did I say anything that doesn't bring us together? The sad thing is, it seems like a funeral brings us together than it does for us to wake up and see the reality of what this whole state is going through. Seeing people talk about they want to bring one side of the story, and the other side wants to bring out the truth. The truth or the reality is, we can't afford any more higher prices, higher utility bills, more social justice issues that go nowhere, and penalize ourselves and think to ourselves that, hey, we are still divided. Maybe if you find out what brings us together, you can fix the problems that makes us feel safe. God bless you, and God bless America.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Latonya Warren. Ms. Warren, ma'am, if you would come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Hi. My name is Latonya Warren. I am a student at Old Dominion University, going after my PhD in analytical chemistry. I am also CEO and founder and Army veteran at Armentia LLC. Armentia is a federally certified cannabinoid research, development, and education company. I was the first with an approved cannabinoid research proposal at O D, at O D U. I am also a city council cannabis advisory task force board member, and I am here today to spread the awareness of the growing cannabis industry and the course that we provide. Right now, there are, there is an approved plan proposal for a dispensary, lab, and shopping center in Portsmouth at the intersection of Missy Elliott, Portsmouth Boulevard, Airline Boulevard, and Turnpike, excuse me. This is owned by my partner, Ivory Ellis. It was brought to my attention, and my, it was brought to the attention of myself and my team at O D U, that the taxable cannabinoid revenue made a substantial wave for the city of Portsmouth. And if you take a look at the examination of Virginia Medical Cannabis Market Report, there were a pathway recommendations, there were five pathway recommendations made. It's important to note that for pathway one, pathway one acts that the state make no policy changes to the medical cannabis program, and issue the remaining pharmaceutical processor license in HSA one. And two weeks ago, the Virginia Cannabis Control Authority, V C C A, announced the opening of HSA one applications. Throughout history, we've seen that these types of reports, recommendations are often implemented. This brings me to my final point, pathway two, or step two, if you will. Step two recommends that the V C C A add limited standalone medical cultivation, manufacturing, and dispensing licenses that can operate with HSA, with the HSAs currently involved, and allow pharmaceutical processors to expand beyond their six-store maximum within their HSA. The already approved plans will not only posture Portsmouth as a continued leader in the cannabis industry, but this space intrigues my, my team, because if you take a look at the Virginia Code four point one dash six, one six zero two, which was, which made, which, excuse me, made, was made effective January one, twenty twenty-four, the permit to operate a pharmaceutical processor or cannabis dispensing facility. You will see that the educational standards and requirements do not change. Armentia has positioned itself to be a key player. Armentia LLC is the cannabinoid education hub, and in collaboration with Old Dominion University, our logistical group, excuse me, blueprint, will not only benefit the great city of Portsmouth financially, it will also provide education to the community, gaining them sustainable employment in the cannabis industry, and access to grants and state and federal contracts. And I'm gonna turn it over to my partner, Ivory.
Ma'am, unfortunately, we, when you sign up to be a speaker, you are the sole speaker, so you can't relinquish your time to someone else.
No, I apologize. I did not realize.
Yes, ma'am. Those are our council rules.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I mean, if you'd like to continue, then you, you can continue if you still had time, but we do not relinquish time to another person.
Thank you. I did not realize.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Baggerley. Did I pronounce that right, sir?
Thank you. I'm Steve Baggerley. I'm from Lambert's Point neighborhood in Norfolk, and I'm with the Hampton Roads Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, or H R CAN. March twentieth marked a year since Golden Rule Day in Portsmouth. Last March, the historic sailboat Golden Rule was amid its journey on the Great Loop around the eastern United States when it pulled into Hampton Roads for a week. On the twentieth, it was welcomed by Mayor Glover, and presented with a proclamation of welcome, and the declaration of Golden Rule Day in the city, and the populace was invited to visit the historic peace boat docked at the end of High Street. In nineteen fifty-eight, the Golden Rule was manned by four Quakers, including one who had commanded three warships during World War Two, and it attempted to sail into the nuclear test site in the Marshall Islands. Radiation from nuclear testing had spread across the globe, and the crew tried to interfere with a scheduled series of tests by the United States. They were arrested and jailed in Honolulu, but the resulting outcry helped propel the global movement to ban atmospheric nuclear weapons testing, which happened in nineteen sixty-two. I was fortunate to be able to join the crew for three weeks in June, as we sailed from Rhode Island to Maine. The boat is now sponsored by Veterans for Peace, and as we stopped in different coastal towns, I was privileged to meet veterans of all stripes, including one who in October of nineteen sixty-two was aboard ship off Cuba during the missile crisis. He saw President Kennedy's daily updates, realized, realized he may never make it to twenty years old, and became a nuclear abolitionist on the spot. But nuclear weapons aren't only history, we live in their shadow every day, perpetually only minutes away from a possible nuclear firestorm raining down either deliberately or by mistake, and ending civilization as we know it. The current moment is the closest the world has been to nuclear war since Cuba, with two nuclear armed states engaged in wars that could easily escalate and draw in other nuclear powers. But now there's a treaty, the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, the T P N W, that is designed to facilitate global verifiable nuclear disarmament. Seventy countries have ratified it, another twenty-four have signed, and more are in the pipeline. But none of the nine nuclear armed states are party to the treaty, so trust must be built. When the United States pulled out of the Anti-Ballistic Missile Treaty in the early two thousands, it set the Russian nuclear weapons complex on its course for the last two decades, to contrive ways to get nuclear weapons past our missile defenses. One way they've done so is to build drone torpedoes that can carry one megaton warheads to vaporize coastal cities like our own. In the late nineteen nineties, the US failed to live up to its end of the agreed framework with North Korea, and a few years later, backed out after two years of talks that were on the cusp of a deal that would have included North Korea giving up its nuclear weapons program. Other countries don't trust us, and we don't trust them. But the US and the Soviet Union disarmed fifty-five thousand nuclear weapons between them, many through treaties. It can be done, trust can be built. Trust but verify, as Ronald Reagan put it, and the T P N W would do just that. So H R CAN thanks Portsmouth for last year's Golden Rule Day, and we ask you to consider passing the City Appeals Resolution from our Nobel Peace Prize-winning umbrella organization, the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, or ICANN. It asks the federal government to join the treaty, which would mean not unilateral disarmament, but taking the lead in organizing the other nuclear armed states to get on board. Hundreds of cities and local and regional bodies all around the world have spoken out in support of the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons through the ICANN Cities Appeal. This month, earlier this month, Rome, Italy, joined Paris, Berlin, Washington, D.C., and Amsterdam to make five capital cities of countries with nuclear weapons on their soil, to have signed the Cities Appeal, asking their governments to join the T P N W. Rather than a target for nuclear weapons, make Portsmouth a voice for a nuclear weapons free world, and please pass the ICANN Cities Appeal. Thank you, and here are copies of the appeal.
Thank you, sir. If you would give them to the sergeant-at-arms, he will distribute them. Thank you again. Our next speaker is Mr. Clayton Thai. Clayton Thai, sir, if you would come forward, state your name. You will have five minutes.
My name is Clayton Thai. I reside at one two seven three three Sand Pebble Circle, Newport News, Virginia. I'm with Veterans for Peace, and I agree with everything that Steve Baggerley had just said, but I'd like to add to it, and go one step further, and suggest that city council add nuclear proliferation and abolition to their twenty twenty-five legislative priorities, as well as task the city manager and city attorney's office with studying making Portsmouth a nuclear-free zone. My, my father was born in Portsmouth Naval Hospital in nineteen fifty-four, and he expressed to me many years ago that he didn't want me to see in the age of nuclear weapons, considering everything that, all the drills and stuff he had to do, living in Norfolk during the Cold War. But here we are, seventy years later, still doing the same thing. On another note, that's my time considering the nuclear abolition, but I did want to make a suggestion to council about the procurement regarding the small women and minority-owned businesses. There are models in place. Governor Northam signed the executive order directing state agencies to procure forty-two percent, I believe, of their state procurement from swamp businesses. The Virginia Department of Small Business and Supplier Diversity manages the swamp business criteria, as well as micro businesses. It's a good model policy for the city to look at. And, you know, there's micro businesses that fall into the swamp category that, you know, you want to go from proximity, proximity and then outward. And it's, it's pretty much as simple as that. And thank you for your time. Um, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes our speakers for this evening. If there's no other business to conduct for the good of the order, this meeting is adjourned. Drive safely.